Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board met tonight in executive session to discuss information or strategy related to negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement and labor relations. During the executive session, the Board also discussed district business that if discussed in public would violate a lawful privilege or lead to the disclosure of student and other confidential information. Our first, we have two meetings tonight. Our first meeting is a reorganization meeting. Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Dad.
Here.
Ms. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Hamilton.
Here.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Here.
Mrs. Lynch.
Here.
Ms. Zich.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. It's time for our first public comment period. Do we have any commenters? No, okay, thank you. First, we will have the election of the temporary president. I, do we have any nominations?
I nominate Adam Good.
Second?
Ron Frank seconds.
Okay. Any other nominations for temporary president? Seeing no further nominations, no objections, the chairperson shall declare the nominations closed. Mrs. Anusik, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zich.
Yes.
Mr. Good is elected temporary president.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Board of Directors, you all have a list of qualified legally elected members of the Board of School Directors for the year now beginning. Does anyone see any errors in the list? Does anyone wish that the list be read aloud? Okay, I will now open the floor to nominations for the office of President.
I'll nominate Mary Beth Dad.
My second. Okay. Any further nominations? Seeing no further nominations, no objections, I declare the nominations closed and call for a vote. Mrs. Anusik, please call the roll.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zich.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Dad has been reelected as president.
All right, congratulations, Ms. Dad. I will now open the floor to nominations for the office of Vice President. I nominate Mr. Frank.
Second.
Okay. Are there any further nominations? Seeing no further nominations and no objections, I declare the nominations closed and call for a vote. Mrs. Anusik, please call the roll.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zich.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Mr. Frank has been reelected Vice President.
Congratulations, Mr. Frank. And I believe, let me turn my page here.
Assistant Secretary.
Oh, other side, thank you. I will now open the floor to nominations for the office of Assistant Secretary.
I nominate Vanessa Lynch.
Ron Frank seconds.
Are there any further nominations? Seeing no further nominations and no objections, I declare the nominations closed and call for a vote. Mrs. Anusik, please call the roll.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zich.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch has been reelected as Assistant Board Secretary.
Congratulations, Mrs. Lynch. I will now turn the meeting over to our President, Ms. Dad.
Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda for appointments, we have the appointment of Katie Finley and Ronald Frank to the A.W. Beatty Board. We also have to approve the appointment of Ron, Ronald Frank as the PSBA Legislative Representative. We have Letter B, the calendar for the 2025 School Board Meetings as attached. Letter C, authorization given to make any required changes of signatures on all bank accounts and to execute signature cards as necessary to implement action. Letter D, the use of facsimile signatures of the Board President, Board Secretary, and Board Treasurer is authorized for signing checks. I move on these four items.
Second?
Any questions or comments on these?
I have a topic to bring up. For the locations, do we feel like it's accomplishing what we're, we set out to do with the meetings at different locations? I know tech isn't as great for setup, and I don't know that I've noticed a big difference in attendance. So I just wanted to bring that up.
I've liked having the event, the local participation from the superintendent's report and focus on learning and being able to do that out in the different locations where people don't have to drive all the way across the district to go to their local schools. So that's the only, you're right, I don't think we've gotten the attendance from the community, but that's the one that I've seen. You're right, is that offset by the less ideal tech.
Where were we last time, Kurt? And it was the O'Hara PTO that was there, so it wasn't even aligned.
Oh, that was the, that was the PTO.
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't, I don't know. It's just something I'm bringing up because I know there was a big discussion about being more in the communities, and I think there's better ways to do that, that's not by holding business meetings in different locations. That's all.
I actually agree. And I've heard from some constituents that the audio is less reliably accessible and also even some of the visuals for those satellite meetings. And so I think if the goal is to make the content of this meeting accessible, I think we achieve that better in this room than we do when we travel physically to other locations. And I've not seen sort of the physical representation at those other locations indicate that physical accessibility is more important. Does that make sense? I think we're, I think we're certainly trading one for the other, and based on feedback, it sounds like the sort of digital accessibility is more important.
And I know those are all concerns that the administration had brought up when we first made this, but I feel like we've been doing it for at least two years now, traveling? If not three, two?
I think so.
Two years traveling, and I don't know. I mean, it's just something that has been in my mind, but I know it's harder work just for those who set up those meetings.
I think the other piece of important conversation to me, I'm sorry, is that I think it's important for us to have ourselves be in other buildings as well. I think it's important for us to walk into other buildings across the district. We're responsible for all of these buildings. And I think it's important for us to spend time in them and to actually, like, I would never walk into Kerr if I didn't have a meeting there. So I think there is an importance to that as well.
Yeah, and I feel like in the first year, we were met a bit by like the principal and maybe some staff and shown a bit more in the schools. And I mean, this past year, we'd just literally be lined for the meeting room. So I don't know, I don't, I think that we definitely should be in communities. I think we should be talking to people in the communities, and business meetings aren't really even a space to be able to talk to people if they were showing up.
Yeah, I've appreciated the half dozen times that we've been to buildings not during meetings, whether it's for awards, theatrical performances, Light Center tours, any of those out of school time provider opportunities, like even infrastructure tours. I think that those may be more effective at connecting us with staff and students and families than these meetings are, the satellite meetings.
Yeah, I'm not saying we, like, I'm necessarily saying we should change all the locations for next, for this current vote, because I think that might, we might have to post some things or something. When we have to change or something.
Nothing's been advertised because it hasn't been approved, but it was public. Mr. DeFray, I do believe we have to approve the date and time and location. Am I accurate there? At, in December, at the reorganization meeting, meeting tonight.
Right.
I do think the dates are fine, it's just a question of.
Could we make a motion to change the locations?
I'm open to more discussion. I'm saying if we want to take the year.
Or we could change it later.
To look at that, or like, I'm not really making a motion at this moment to change all of those, unless that's what the Board decides to do, but I.
Okay.
I always think about this, and I was like, well, it's now or never.
Mr. Frank, what do you think?
I think it's good to get out into the, into the other buildings. And I also think with $35 to $40 million where the renovations, we're looking at in the next five years, not renovations, repairs essentially, I think it would be good for our Board members to see those areas where things might need to be improved over with the long-range plan.
Is it important to do that during, yeah, as a matter of.
We could have an executive session and take a look at those things, but it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we can use the time that we're in the buildings.
Yes, that's what.
Better than, yes, yes. I mean, that's part of my.
To take advantage of being in the building more.
Walk right to the meeting room and out, and we're not seeing the benefits of seeing more people or talking to more people.
But your point of looking for opportunities to interact with the community is important too. So maybe that is something different than a board meeting.
I agree with that, yeah.
Sure.
Ms. Finley?
I think we need to make sure that when we do go to other buildings that don't have the technical capabilities of being able to hear us throughout the entire meeting, like last month's, you couldn't hear the entire last comments. Everything was off, you couldn't hear anything, you couldn't see anything. Just to make sure that we have a study session in the one and then an actual, the final decision, the business meeting in the LGI room or a room that has the capability to handle everything.
Consistent here that we have a combined in May and we have a.
I think we do the study here and then we do the voting in the other buildings.
Or vice versa, yeah.
We tend to have more discussion in the study meeting than the voting meeting, is how we discussed this two years ago.
In November, is there a reason where Kerr for the, or you want to hear the discussion? Is that what you just said? Did I hear you backwards?
I think we want study.
I said we've been doing study here, so you can hear the discussion and voting in one of the other buildings.
Right, okay. And so that's only an issue for the June 2nd meeting, which has a study at O'Hara, and the May 5th meeting, which has a combined at Dorseyville, at DMS. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
The reason that the June 2nd is a study session is because it usually includes a lot of student recognition and school is out for the next one, meaning that students are usually not as available.
That's a good point.
And any of those changes are usually based on student schedules.
Yeah, sure, of course, sure.
Mr. Good, what do you think?
I think, I think we should keep these locations, but maybe for this year, think about, I mean, I think there may be ways to improve the audio. There's some time before February 10th to think about that. I think that's outside of this discussion. But I also would suggest that we, when we visit other locations for our meetings, that we have some time prior to or afterward to engage with the building in some way. I think that would help a lot. Again, that's sort of outside of this. I mean, I think that the locations are good, and I appreciate having the variety. Let's just make sure we're using that when we do it.
Okay, I'm not sure what the consensus is.
I'm happy to make a motion and have it fail, I think if that's helped us out. Would you rather take an informal vote or have him take a motion and? No, yeah.
I mean, I think we're here in keeping this, but make the meeting time more beneficial or meaningful.
Well, you could leave the meeting, leave the official meeting time, but schedule a little bit of time for us, for the Board to do something.
Like the prior to the meeting.
Prior to the meeting, yeah.
And then try to improve the digital accessibility of the audio and the video for.
Yeah, I would encourage that as well.
And lean into your mics. We can, we can make a big difference in how much the audio works and doesn't work by how we lean into our mics. So like, I don't mean to be funny, but like, also, there's a piece of this that like, you can just lean in.
Maybe the Board needs some AV training of ourselves.
We don't do that very well.
Some mic training. That could be, I mean, that's legitimate.
So for this year, as of now, we will leave the locations as is.
You good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So any other discussion on these items? Okay, Mrs. Anusik, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zich.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, it's time for second public comment period. No one signed up. Board comments, does anyone have a comment?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. And now I'd like to call the combined agenda and regular study session business meeting to order. Mrs. Anusik, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Dad.
Here.
Ms. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Frank.
Yeah, here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Hamilton.
Here.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Here.
Mrs. Lynch.
Here.
Ms. Zich.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. Dr. Ralja, could you introduce all of our wonderful guests?
Yes, we have many guests tonight, and we're so glad to see all of you here this evening. We're here to celebrate a number of things here in the district that have happened. First, I'm going to introduce Fox Chapel Area High School Boys Assistant Soccer Coach, Emily Grachowski, who is here to introduce the Whippile Champion Boys Soccer Team. Good evening, members of the Board, administrators, parents, and community members. I'm honored to stand before you tonight to reflect on an extraordinary soccer season. This year has been a remarkable journey, one that showcased not only athletic talent, but also the character, resilience, and dedication of our student athletes. I want to highlight the tremendous effort put forth by our players. They've demonstrated commitment both on and off the field, balancing academics and athletics with integrity. Every practice and match has been an opportunity for growth, and these young men have shown what it takes to persevere, work as a team, and represent our school with pride. I'd like to extend gratitude to the parents and families who supported this team throughout the season. Your sacrifices, encouragement, and perseverance in the stands made a world of difference. Thank you for being our partners in fostering both athletic and personal growth. Overall, this season wasn't just about the wins and losses, it was about developing character, building community, and creating lasting memories. We're proud of what we accomplished and look forward to continued success of our soccer program. Thank you for your support in giving these student athletes an opportunity to thrive on and off the field. So recognize tonight. Recognize tonight, I'm going to start with our seniors, Milo Chu. Brad Zimmerman. Aiden Stein. Lorenzo Smoraglio. Chase Carney. Joseph DiMartino. Rocco DiDomenico. Eduardo Diaz. Jackson Lepiana. Patrick Levy. Brady Matthews. Sean Regan. Jacob Williams. Rocco Poli. David Sikrocky. Sharif Zurikat. And Carson Torres. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Congratulations. And congratulations to our boys soccer team. We also have assistant coach Jess Wilson, who is introducing and speaking about the members of the girls soccer team, who were section champs and made it to the PIAA playoff. And I'm not sure if our girls could be here. I know our coach could be here.
Hello, thank you for having us. Well, me. Unfortunately, none of my girls could make it, but they are here in spirit and they sure have a lot of it. But they had a great season. We were in a new division this year, so that was exciting to see. And they did come out and win that section. They were Whippile runner-ups and they had a good run at States as well. So unfortunately, I can't name them all. They're not here, but thank you so much for recognizing them.
Thank you, Koya. It is a hard time of year with busy schedules, which we understand. We also have high school girls head golf coach, John Kteski, who is here to introduce the section winning girls golf team. And this is the team's seventh consecutive section crown.
Hi, I'm, I'm John Kteski and I inherited the team from Christine Smith, which she left the program in great shape. And I just want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to coach the girls this year. It was a great team to coach. It was fun. And I also want to thank you for how robust the golf program is in Fox Chapel. I don't know if people share the numbers with you, but over fifty kids tried out for the boys and girls golf team. I think it was like fifty-four, fifty-five. And that's for eleven starting spots. You know, five for the girls and six for the boys. So the golf program at Fox Chapel is quite deep. I want to thank Mike O'Brien and my assistant coaches, Buddy Valinsky and Dave Bush, that they couldn't make it tonight. The girls team, we had sixteen girls on it, three seniors, four juniors, five sophomore, and four freshmen. Our JV team, which is a team that you guys added two years ago, thank you for that, they went eleven and one this year. And they could have beat many of the varsity teams in the, in, in the Whippile. I know it's not easy to add a team, so thank you for doing that, you know, making the resources available, especially in a day and age where I think girls sports sometimes are underappreciated or underfunded. So thank you for doing that. The varsity team finished seventeen and three, the most wins in the WPIL. They were nine and oh at the Pittsburgh Field Club, which is our home course, which is a great asset. Thank you for arranging that. I mean, people fight to get onto our schedule, just to play there. We were section four champions. We were WPIL runner-ups. We lost to the eventual state champions in Peters Township. And then we took fifth in the state, which was a lot better than we thought we were going to do at the beginning of the year. At some point, we were third in our section and we weren't even, it didn't even look like we were going to qualify for Whippiles and we made it all the way to States. As you know, golf is also an individual team sport, along with, individual sport, along with it being a team sport. We had Claire Kteski, she repeated, a sophomore as a section champion. Morgan Monteverdi came in, section runner-up, Ava Calandra took sixth. And then at the Whippi, WPIL, all three of them took in the top twenty-five. I want to congratulate our two captain seniors, Gabby DeVita and Boston Bitar. And then our third graduating senior is Riley Perka. So our members, remember, we're small to golf's a small sport. We've got four of them here tonight. We have one sick and then a couple working. The first one is Morgan Monteverdi. Come on up. The third is London Bitar. And the fourth is Brooke Leone. So thanks, everyone. Here's to the two thousand twenty-five season coming up and go Fox.
We are so pleased to have so many wonderful student athletes here tonight. We also want to thank their families, who I know contribute quite a bit to making sure they get where they need to go and still keep up with all of their schoolwork. And we appreciate it. Whether we were able to be there in person to cheer you on or whether I was getting text messages as your competitions were going, it was very exciting to follow your progress this year. Thank you.
Okay, is that it for our guests?
That is all for our guests, but we still have our Fox Chapel, our Fox Leadership Council student representative too.
Yes, Annie Moan, are you here? There she is.
Good evening. My name is Annie Moan. I'm the FLC president and I'm also serving as our high school's telethon chair for the second year. I'm excited that today was the kickoff of our telethon season throughout the district. We are once again supporting Backpack for Hunger, which is an amazing local charity that helps students directly in all of our schools by providing weekend food bags. In fact, they help assist four hundred students a week. Last year, we raised over sixty-six thousand dollars for Backpack for Hunger and we are excited to continue to work with them this year. Just some fun things we are planning this month, holiday baked treat sales, popcorn sales, fox ornament sales, ice cream sundaes, boba teas. And it isn't just food. We have a dodgeball and pickleball tournament planned, plus our holiday mega bowl for some fun flag football. Finally, telethon season will end on the twentieth of December with our dodgeball finals, holiday movie, and Fox Fest concert. Look for the live stream on Swift Fox Media YouTube channel. We are looking forward to another successful telethon season. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our superintendent's report.
This is the last group that we have this evening. We have Fox Chapel area high school technology education teacher and Technology Student Association, or TSA sponsor, Joe Gass, who is here to introduce students who will talk about the TSA. And the association has a very active chapter at Fox Chapel area high school and it allows students to gain valuable leadership opportunities in a wide range of STEM subjects. So, Mr. Gass.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. McCollmans, Dr. Eljack. Thank you for having us here tonight. I've had the privilege for the last twenty-seven years of being a part of this great organization called TSA, or the Technology Student Association. We've expanded our footprint here at, at the high school and have a very active membership. Kids are excited and enthusiastic about, enthusiastic about it. And I'm very pleased to have four of those students with me here tonight. They're going to talk a little bit about what they do for our student body and for, you know, the school district as a whole. This is Yuliana.
Good evening. My name is Yuliana Kubini. I'm a junior here at Fox Chapel area high school and I'm currently serving as the vice president and president-elect of Fox Chapel's Technology Student Association. TSA is a national organization that gives students leadership opportunities in a competitive environment. The over seventy-five distinct events offered comprise a wide range of subjects from architectural, architectural modeling to biotechnology solutions to fashion design.
Events fall into two styles, onsite in which students are given a prompt and a time constraint to develop their solution, and submission in which students are given the, the prompt ahead of time and work on it over several months. Regardless of the competition style, students are forced to think orthogonally, collaborate with team members, and master professional-grade hardware and software. Even outside of our competitions, we work collectively and innovate to run fundraisers, organize recruitment, and coordinate logistics. It's for these reasons that TSA is lauded for its ability to inspire technical and leadership growth in students, preparing them for their future studies and careers in, yeah, and careers in cutting-edge fields. In fact, alumni of our own Fox Chapel chapter have gone on to study computer science at Rice, Stanford, UPenn, and UIUC, aerospace engineering at Georgia Tech and Purdue, mechanical engineering at RIT and CU Boulder, mathematics at CMU, architecture at Vassar, and that's just over the past three years.
So I've been in this club for about four years now and throughout this time, TSA hasn't been this big all the time. Coming in during my freshman year, our club was actually really small. I think about like twenty kids total, so we were like a tiny club. But all throughout my four years, I was able to take leadership positions and we ended up growing this club into one of the largest clubs in high school right now. I believe we have over like a hundred fifteen members, I believe. And so we're now, we're able to allow a lot of students who are, suffer from like prejudices or minority students to allow them to compete in competitions, to allow them to just show and allow us to appreciate their talents. One of us here has been to many of the national competitions that we had and that is Yuliana.
The summer of my freshman year, I had the honor of competing at the TSA National Conference in Louisville, Kentucky. There I had the honor of meeting and competing with students from all across the United States, as well as other countries like Turkey and Germany. In between thrilling competition sessions, renowned business leaders and scholars offered us insights on everything from college applications to future career success. The combination of social, competitive, and educational opportunities offered at TSA Nationals is truly unmatched by any other extracurricular event I have ever been involved in.
Hello, my name is Rohit Volinkar and I'm the current sergeant-at-arms of TSA. At TSA, I have seen a community form. My closest friends are also members of TSA, or I should actually rephrase. The members of TSA became my closest friends. In workshop days and QRTS seven AM on the bus home from conferences and late at night on the competition floor in Seven Springs, I've seen this club bring people together. I can point to dozens of my fellow members whom I've made personal memories with. And I'm eager to continue doing this during my last year here at Fox Chapel. Whether we win or not, our goal will always be to make TSA an inclusive and welcoming community for all those who chose to, choose to participate. For the opportunities, experiences, and memories created by this club, I would like to thank first our three faculty sponsors, Mr. Paparello, Mr. Pelusis, and Mr. Gass, who's here with us today. And secondly, my fellow elected student leaders, some of which are here today as well. Finally, we are thankful, of course, for the school board's continuing support of our efforts to expand and diversify technology leadership education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for being here. We really appreciate seeing our four pillars that really exemplify what we expect in the Fox Chapel area school district. Purpose, passion, care, and community, all on display this evening. And we appreciate all of you being here. You are all welcome to stay through the rest of the meeting, but we also understand if you have other things and you need to do those. But we appreciate you staying so our students had a nice audience.
Okay, Mr. DeFray, is there a solicitor's report?
No report this evening.
Thank you. I am asking for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular business meeting dated November eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, corrections for the minutes? Was that Ms. Finley that made the motion? Excuse me, who made the motion? Katie, Katie made the motion, yes. Hearing no questions, Mrs. Anusik, could you please call the roll? Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zich.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. It's time for our first public comment period. We do not have anyone signed up. So we will move on to new business, facilities, and transportation. Mrs. Lynch.
I move on one item, additional school bus drivers for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Ratify hiring the additional ABC Transit drivers from the attached list effective for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. All required licensing clearances and all other essential employment requirements for school bus operators and the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania have been verified. I move on this item.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the new bus drivers?
I'm grateful for the addition of bus drivers.
Yes, I believe we're still short. How many?
Approximately seven.
Okay.
I mean, it varies with absences.
Day to day.
It's ten or eleven, but right now we're seven.
About seven short, okay. Thank you. We appreciate any additional ones that come on board. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Anusik, could you please call the roll? Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zich.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Hamilton, the finance report, please.
I have three items for approval tonight. Item one is finance report. Finance report for October twenty twenty-four is acknowledged and filed for audit as attached. Item two, approved resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty dash four as attached, authorizing the participation of Fox Chapel area school district in the Allegheny and intermediate unit joint purchasing program through the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year and authorizing the appointment of Kimberly Polisak and Dan Burfords as, as representatives of the district. This is a renewal of participation. Item three, approved the agreement as attached between Fox Chapel area school district and AMCA Systems LLC for ACA tax break software effective December thir- AMCA Systems LLC for ACA tax break software effective December 3rd, 2024 at a cost of $3,050. This is a renewal of services. As a side note, I mentioned that there are no disbursements on the agenda this evening because of the holiday occurred and then just before, or the end of the month occurred over a holiday, and we had our meeting right after that. So the disbursements will be for November and December will be appear on next month's agenda. This occurs occasionally whenever we have an early meeting, meeting early in the month, and so we'll see those in December, in January. I move on all three items.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Can you just remind everybody with the joint purchasing program what that's used for?
Sure. It is essentially, we work along with other members who participate in the joint purchasing program in order to purchase some services and goods through a cooperative agreement. Usually, it allows us to use economy of scale in order to get a better arrangement for the school district.
Any other questions? Mrs. Anuzik, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. Cooper, could you read the instruction report, please?
Yes, I have five items I'll be moving on. The first is a textbook approval. It's a, just an updated copyright effective for the 24-25 school year on entrepreneurship, ideas, and actions, seventh student edition. Number two is there is a January 2025 graduate. The following student is eligible for mid-year graduation, subject to final approval of the school lead principal. Number three is to approve the student education agreement as attached between the school district and River Academy of Excellence to provide services to an unnamed student for the 24-25 school year. This is a renewal of services. Number four has a Part A and a Part B. Part A is to approve the memorandum of understanding regarding transperfect AI portal translation as attached between the district and the Allegheny intermediate unit to provide access to written translation through an AI portal to support non-English speaking parents and families, effective for the 25-26 school year at a cost of $500. This is a renewal of services. And Part B of that is to approve the M of U regarding a telephone interpretation services as attached between the school district and the Allegheny intermediate unit to provide telephone voice interpretation for non-English speaking parents and families, effective for the 25-26 school year at the cost of $120 plus additional costs for other services as needed. This is a renewal. And number five is to approve a settlement of claim by parents of student as presented. I move on those five items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items?
Let me question on item number four. I'm just curious if we have any pathways for providing feedback on the quality of this translation service, and if so, have folks found it useful?
It is, it's required, actually, to have some kind of translation services, and this is a service that usually has a bulk of school forms and school communications already built in multiple languages. This helps us to meet our compliance and also to make sure that all families are informed in their language of choice. And so, yes, it has worked out pretty well for us.
Yeah.
It's sometimes, sometimes we use other services as well, depending on a specific need. If there's something that's, that this does not provide, but this is a really good opportunity for us to use.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I'm grateful that we have such services. I'm interested in the quality of this one, but it sounds like it's working. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Anuzik, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Frank, the legislation and policy report, please.
Under policies revised for the second reading and the adoption, I move that we approve 613 cooperative purchasing, 614 payroll authorization, 615 payroll deductions, 616 payment of bills, 617 petty cash, 618 student activity funds, 619 district audit, 621 local taxpayer bill of rights, 622 GASB statement 34, 624 taxable fringe benefits, 625 procurement cards, 626 federal fiscal compliance, and 626.1 travel reimbursement federal programs. The item number two is revised policies and their first reading. I would move to approve those as well. For the first reading, number 113.1, discipline of students with disabilities, 113.2 behavioral support, 202 eligibility of non-resident students, 227 controlled substances paraphernalia, 236.1 threat assessment, 254 educational opportunity for military children, 701 facilities planning, 703 sanitary management, 704 maintenance, 805.2 school security personnel, and 903 public comment in board meetings. I move both number one and number two.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these policies?
Yes. I just have a few that I mentioned to the committee. Thank you all for considering those sort of inputs. So my, just to bring you all up to speed, so my main questions were about public comment in board meetings, item number 903, to start, which let me find the page number for you. Let's, I think, the easy one. So did we modify that to allow comment in committee meetings so that regardless of whether they were on the agenda, those comments? So to allow for your main comment?
We did.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that modification. And then, and then I just wanted to follow up on, sorry, the item number 113.2 behavior support, which is kind of an extension of the 113.1, discipline of students with disabilities? Yeah, we'll give you just a second. They're all buried in there.
It's on page 87 of the policy, or if you're online, it appears to be page 75?
75, yeah. So the digital, page 75, printed page 80, digital, sorry, digital page 75, printed page 87. Taking some of Vanessa Lynch's feedback here, trying to lean into the mic. And so I just, I know that there's a great deal of regulation. There, you'll see a lot of footnotes in this policy related to how discipline, particularly, not necessarily discipline, excuse me, physical control of students and the context in which that occurs. And because this language is very explicit and relates to the regulation of sort of some high-risk situations between school personnel, contractor personnel, and also and students with disabilities, I just wanted to sort of follow up on some of my questions that I know had been brought out of committee. So the first was related to seclusion of students. Do we want to make, or is there room to make any provisions for seclusion of students who have a known risk of depression, anxiety, suicidality, or self-harm? And the reason I ask is because seclusion can be a dangerous event for a student who has exhibited self-harm in the past. And so I'm curious if that was something that the committee had considered in the discussion of this policy, per the, the sort of notes that I sent in advance, or maybe if Dr. Eljack had made any advance, like?
So this is a highly regulated policy, and as a school district, we, it's governed not only by federal law, but it's governed by basic education circular Pennsylvania. So this is, I, I would say that changing that to add in how someone is feeling may be a difficult thing to be able to rectify with the regulations. I wouldn't make any changes without going through our special education council, because this is an important legal background policy. So I will say in our district, we don't even teach some of the potential things for restraining students or putting students in seclusion in our safety care process, because we feel that there's, there are better ways to do that for our district. And so our safety care process actually is what we have certain trained staff members for, and it is highly limiting as to what we would even do for any student.
So, thank you. I appreciate that. I think, and I appreciate that, like, for example, prone positions are prohibited in this policy, which are extremely dangerous, along with a number of other things. I guess my question is, if an untrained staff feels compelled to use one of the maneuvers that's allowed in this policy, it wouldn't technically be a violation of policy, though it would be more risky because that staff hadn't been trained, as you're saying. So like, why are we allowing for maneuvers and policy that we're not training staff in?
I'm, I'm trying to just, you're asking for a hypothetical that isn't how the operational and implementation of this policy looks.
Okay.
So we don't have untrained staff members that respond when a student is in danger, unless it's a life safety issue at that moment. And then this policy isn't the most important policy life safety would be. Other than that, it is specifically trained staff. There's a system for that, and that's how it's implemented. So the reason I'm hesitant is, I understand what you're asking, but that's not what happens in the implementation of the policy. So it's hard to give you an answer when it doesn't match that.
Sure. Yeah, and I think what I'm feeling for here is, is like ambiguity that could be potentially harmful. Right. And so that's, that's, that's exactly why I'm asking the question. If those are addressed in your administrative regulations in terms of the types of scenarios where you respond and who's allowed to respond, I think that's, that's the answer that I'm looking for, if that makes sense. Like, is there, like, where do the rules live that keep children safe?
So it's a, it's a living, breathing document, because we have people that go on leave and other people that come on, and every building has to, to, they provide that to us so that we have that at the beginning of the year and as it changes throughout the year. And so are there procedures that outline all of that? Yes. As to, it's not by title, it's usually by person, by individual, and we keep all of that training information. It's also something that we have to report to the state quarterly. So it's, it's one of those regular data collections from the state, and there are requirements in that reporting that you have to meet, that we do meet.
Okay.
I, I understand what you're asking. I'm not sure how else to, I guess where I'm, where I'm hesitant is, it's not going to be outlined in, in an administrative regulation that these are the five people, that, because it's, it changes as personnel changes.
So what are the, so what are the safeguards in a scenario where a student has an individualized plan, but the typical staff who they work with aren't present or available because of illness or whatever?
They're actually called in. And there are duplicate teams in every building, so there's always a group of people so that you can have the needed amount. And it's not as if you have five or six people. You usually have one person with other people standing nearby in case needed, because the idea isn't to escalate, it's to de-escalate a student who may be having difficulty. But every building has a contingency of people, including just about everybody that's in a special education setting, and then additional staff members throughout the building.
And then I, one of the questions I had was about seclusion and whether we wanted to consider adding closets to the list of areas where we prohibit seclusion from occurring. And I bring that up not because there's any suspicion within our district that that has occurred, but because there are other districts where that has occurred and made news.
As we understood it, room is the same as, would, under the, the requirements of the?
The interpretation of the law.
Would be, would be, you know, the same as a closet would be considered a room.
So it would, so you are allowed to seclude children in closets?
No, we are not.
Okay.
I guess you're, you're asking for it to be delineated further, whereas I think that the definition that's in the policy is enough.
That's right.
No, we are not.
Thank you.
Then when you look at seclusion, it talks about least restrictive, least restrictive alternative, meaning it's an IEP team decisions that comes together, and that also includes the, the parents and, you know, medical experts and/or educators that make a tentative plan on what's in the best interest of the child. And so obviously, as Dr. Eljack has shared, there are specific protocols that you are to follow, and obviously, student safety being the number one priority, but that's a very formalized plan. And if some, if a student would have to be secluded, we also have to follow protocols. We have to revisit the plan that we had in place, and was it still appropriate, and if we need to do updates or mediation, or remediation of that plan. So it is very governed by federal and state requirements of what we have to do, if that's a consideration that may be needed for a student.
The first paragraph under seclusion, though, doesn't have the number at the end of it, like the second paragraph does. Is it not as tied to, I'm sorry, could you repeat that again? Under seclusion, the first paragraph does not have the number at the end of the paragraph, the second paragraph does, whereas in others, every paragraph has the number. So I'm just wondering, is that, does that mean that first paragraph is not?
I would have to look at the law itself to see what it's in, what's in there.
I think it covers both paragraphs.
Yes, I believe you're correct.
I might add that that IEP meeting includes the guidance council, the special, the special teachers, not just a special education, but perhaps a music teacher, art teacher, et cetera. So they all coordinate what the plans are.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I understand that the IEP documents, I appreciate that they're revised regularly and essentially provide the guidance for how to interpret this law for each individual child. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Fair summary? Okay. Thank you. That's, yeah, and that's, that is as it should be, and it's not my, it's sort of not my responsibility to question that. I, I, the only thing I'm asking about really are making sure that we have these like sort of bumpers around the discretionary space that our district exercises. So another question I had was related to some of the maneuvers that are allowed and what's taught in training. I know that like, you know, we, as I mentioned, prone positions are specifically prohibited here, are chokeholds allowed in this context by any member of the staff or SROs? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. They weren't named specifically, that's why I asked. And then, physical restraint is never used as a punishment, only as a means of preventing harm to self or others?
Chokeholds?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. To back up a step. So you mentioned chokeholds. They're not specifically mentioned here. Is that something that should be mentioned here? Is that what you were asking?
I guess I'm asking if the places where regulation lives with respect to maneuvers for restraint are chokeholds allowed? And Dr. Eljack has said no.
So we don't actually do restraint.
Okay.
We, we just don't even train that with our staff. So that can be trained in the state of Pennsylvania in schools, and in other school districts, we do. We, we do, we train up until, we train de-escalation and escape, and how to keep a student safe. We don't train any of those other parts, because we don't believe that that's how we should be handling it at this moment.
Okay.
What about within our police force?
Yeah, with our SROs.
So you were mentioning our staff sort of generally, but I'm just sort of wondering, you know, chokeholds tends to be more of a conversation related to police personnel. So I'm just wondering what, where is it delineated within our policy that chokeholds are not acceptable for like our police force, which I think we probably do in practice, but I'm just asking where is it sort of?
Sure. It would be in, in policies that deal with law enforcement and in procedures and handbooks that deal with law enforcement, not necessarily in this. School law enforcement are not called when there is a student with special needs that is having a difficulty, unless there's a life safety issue.
But there could be times where these things overlap.
I'm sorry, what was?
Yes, I understand they aren't a part of the core team of people that you would call in an incident like this.
No, they are not actually part of the core team.
Right. That's what I said. They are not a part of the core team. But there may be times where, in other circumstances, there may be more overlap, and so they may end up in situations where they are working with students who have IEPs more in a public setting, or at a basketball game, or other spheres where there's more overlap. So, so I guess I just want to make sure that, that we're covering sort of that whole arc of our, of the people who work for us.
So law enforcement would fall under the law enforcement policies and procedures in their handbook. So it's, it's in a different section as to where that would be, and it's really more in their handbook and their procedures.
Right, but we don't approve or look at their handbook?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
We, the school board, don't approve or look at their handbook. No.
Right.
We have access to the, we can see the handbook. I've looked at it in the past, and I think, actually, I think recently I asked for us to receive it again. I can't remember.
I think that was like three years ago, yes.
No, I think I asked recently to, to see it again, but?
We, we talked about it at the committee meeting. We talked about it at the committee meeting, I believe, a little bit during our conversation. And, I mean, I will say, all of our officers have been trained in de-escalation, and, you know, it, whenever, any type, if force would need to be intervened, you know, they are trained, and it's an expectation that they use the minimal amount of force in order to maintain the safety of whether it's going to be the student themselves, other students, staff, or the officer. And then, just like we have protocols, as we were talking about for students within the IEP, if an officer does have to engage in force in any way, there, it has to be immediately reported to the supervisor. And then, again, we have a team of individuals that come together, that's district administrators, people from our safety, our threat assessment team, district administrators, as appropriate, to do an evaluation of what the incident was, to ensure that we were, the officer would be responding appropriately in the best interest and the safety of all, and not overreacting or engaging in any way.
Yeah, I think it's the, I think it's those, I'd say rare moments, right, where a student with learning disabilities has, is a part of a violent act that warrants sort of the non-discretionary use of force by police in the building. Those are the times that, that I like, I like wonder, I have curiosity about how our policy steps in, and is there, which, which, sort of, what takes precedent? Are protections of students with learning disabilities as it relates to this seclusion and restraint policy, or sort of officer training and their discretion handbook and policies? Which is more important in those moments where we have a student with learning disabilities who is a participant or co-conspirator in a violent act?
Well, first of all, if there's a violent act, safety is paramount, period.
Yep.
And we would expect everyone, staff members and school officers, to act in the incident, in the best interest of protecting the safety of the students involved, as well as the other students in the school and staff. That's of most importance. Unfortunately, the context would matter very greatly in that situation. And so, it's hard to say one would be more important than another, because the context could be quite different, depending on what is going on.
Okay. Yeah, I'll say that one of the things I'm holding in my mind is that, like, three-quarters of students who are incarcerated have learning disabilities. So, like, the rate of encounter, particularly even with summary citations or with use of force, that it's particularly high for the groups that are in this policy, or that are intended to be protected by this policy. And so, I think it's that sort of discretionary moment that I'm trying to figure out, like, before it happens, out of room, without any safety on the line, are we doing everything we can to make sure we're protecting students in that situation? So, I would, I would be, I think maybe a follow-up discussion for this board would be to revisit that handbook, and to make sure that we are fully understanding of what occurs in those moments, or what our officers are trained to do in those moments. Not because we have, we are concerned they've been doing it wrong, but because we want to have that discussion before we need to.
You said our officers. Do you mean our resource police or outside resource police? Outside police?
Yes. I think I'm more interested in SROs, but if there are occurrences where we call outside police, I think I'm interested in when those occur and why. Does that make sense?
I mean, I don't...
Oh, sorry.
So, we don't, we don't have jurisdiction over outside police, and the only reason they're called is sometimes they will be here at games, you know, at athletic events, musical events, when we have large crowds, so that we can supplement. You know, other than that, it would be a significant safety issue that we would call outside police.
Yeah, absolutely. No, thank, thank you.
I know our own officer, Bailey, has done, I think, national trainings on his experience of...
Correct.
I think specifically students with autism, but then I think learning differences in general. So, I would think, hopefully, I would believe that there's a lot of internal trainings then with that.
Yeah, and I think there's like, a sort of, there's a national community of best practice that exists around this, like, with anything. And yet, we still have, there's still a number of occurrences that occur nationally and about, against any backdrop in every district, of every type of district, that tell me that maybe that's not adequate. And I think there's been multiple attempts at state and federal legislation reform specifically related to where this policy lives, and I'd rather not wait for it. So, that's why I'm asking questions, but it doesn't mean...
So, you want a, you want a copy of our policy as far as our resource officers, and if possible, a copy of O'Hara Township, Indiana Township?
I think that would be great. And I would like to, I would like to look at it alongside this to say, like...
So, do you want this pulled from the agenda?
I'm...
This is the first reading, it's not the second.
This is the first reading and not the second. I think I'm, I'm interested in those maneuvers specifically, and whether we need to try to provide that additional layer of protection as it relates to our school board policy, yes. But I, I know I asked for that a lot in this context, and I, and I tried to head that off at the pass a little bit, but I, we, I don't think we were able to get there at this reading, so I would prefer that we pull this policy and look at it again in light of what we think our SROs are going, are sort of being instructed to do between that, between this policy and their handbook. Sorry.
So, I just want to make sure I'm clear, so I understand. So, you're asking as to what the guidelines are that the administrative team has provided for our school officers, and what then this policy is. Am I accurate? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
That's fine. I mean, we can certainly provide that to you. I, I just didn't, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear, so that I can provide that.
Yes.
Because we provide direction to our officers, just like we provide direction to our educators and our support staff and our custodians through a variety of handbooks, because at the end of the day, everybody's in charge of student safety and school safety. And at the same time, we also try and have the right people respond to events with the right level, at the lowest level possible for any event of something that's unnecessary. But if there's an incident of school safety, a significant incident, we're going to have whomever there respond.
It sounds like we're asking, sorry, go ahead. I just was going to say, my only other question was just, this policy specifically talks about IEPs, but I know in our district, we use 504s quite a bit, especially with kids with mental health issues. So, I'm just wondering, as it relates to those students who would still possibly have sort of these more intense interactions and needs, how they, the 504 and this policy interact? Because it's not specifically noted in any way.
I believe that they're covered under the same ideas. I would, I would want to get that answer, though, as to where exactly it all lives, because these are so regulated, I don't want to speak out of turn.
Because that's something that I would be interested in exploring as well, is there space for, for including 504, some sort of 504 language in this policy as well? I think that we, we especially at Fox Chapel use our 504s a lot with our kids with mental health needs, and I think that because of that, we need to be a little more robust in the way that we're looking at a policy like this.
And I would just want to say, I wouldn't change anything in this policy without putting it through significant legal checking, because it, I don't want to inadvertently do something because we're having a conversation that would in some way put us at a disadvantage.
I'm just asking, can we look?
Sure, yes, same.
The reason I say that is, if there are going to be recommendations to change this, then I would recommend that the board send this back to committee.
I was just going to say, it sounds like what Era was asking for is specific language around de-escalation, because this looks like it talks a lot about positive behavior support. And does language around de-escalation exist in maybe another policy that would relate to this that we're just not looking?
I don't believe it's in a policy, because positive behavior support usually includes that as part of its requirements under the IEP process. It's in some special education handbooks, it's in what we turn into the state and other places as to procedures, it's in other places. Because it doesn't live in the policy, it lives in a practice based on what the, that's why they're called positive behavior support plans, because they have to have a positive, you have to, you have to work on how your building skills, not taking away things.
There's a lot of good in this policy, and I'm curious if it, if some of the protections in it are afforded to all students, not to students with disabilities. So, the protections about seclusion and restraint, acceptable and unacceptable forms of punishment and discipline, the, even, even some of, like, the notifications, or what sorts of events trigger the use of seclusion and restraint, do these protections extend to the whole student body?
This particular policy is for the special education requirements. Other policies would cover what happens to our, you know, in other student situations, but this is not. This is specifically for students with disabilities, because that's the legal requirement you have as a board, is to have this policy.
Yeah, totally. And so, I guess my question is, have we seen the discipline policy that is not for students with disabilities yet?
No, you already approved it last year.
It was last year, okay. It might be worth, I'll try to take a look at that policy from the 2023 approval and just... Yeah, just take a, take a browse.
Can I, can I re, can I change my motion and, motion for everything in number one and everything in number two, with the exception of 113, number two? We'll remove that from the agenda.
Second.
And then, we're returning?
So, we'll return 113.2 to committee. Is that correct?
Yep.
Do they have specific directions?
And then, yeah, I'll just add one more, which was about parental notification of seclusion. So, when seclusion is used, can we make up, can we add...
What are we talking about? That?
Sorry, same policy, 113.2.
Well, let's just, let's just submit that to the committee, and we'll, we'll put that...
Okay, okay, yeah, those comments have all been sent, and I just never heard back, so...
Submit that to the committee, and then we can talk about it.
Thank you. All right. And then, just one more question about non-resident students, which was, one, I think this is a great policy, and I believe the state legislature passed this one, which, so this is like a hand-me-down, but it's outstanding. I was just curious if we wanted to address guardianship proceedings that are not yet resolved for considering the eligibility of non-resident students. So, if there's a student in a custody battle between a parent who is in district and out of district, or a guardian who is in district and out of district, do you want those students to be protected under the same policy until that resolution occurs?
Those students are actually in the court system then, so the court system or the two parents would have to work out the agreement. If one parent lives in the district, the parent is, the student is permitted to come to a district school. That's under the law. The district would not transport from outside of the district, so they would transport from the parent's home that's inside the district, not from the parent's home that's outside of the district. And then, the courts are involved. We, we usually don't get involved while there are ongoing custody issues, because that's a more of a legal and private matter.
So, there would be no enforcement of residency until that determination is made by the court?
We would enforce residency if both parents have moved outside of the district, then...
But if one is in and one is out, you wouldn't...
Then they're good to go.
They're good to go. Okay, perfect, great, thank you. I don't need to send that one?
Do we have a second, then?
I thought I seconded already.
Sorry, I lost track.
That's all right.
Were you, were you going to take both 113s or just?
Just two. Yeah, did you want to take 1131 and 1132, or just, I didn't have any comments or recommendations for 1131?
Just 1131?
Two.
1132.
Just two?
Just behavior support.
That's the one you're sending that you're going to exclude? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion stands, and it's been seconded, thank you.
So, this is an amended motion, so there's, or not, yeah, it's just, okay, so there's no, we're not voting on a change, okay.
So, we're ready to vote on the motion, correct?
I only had one other question, just, so this school security personnel policy that we're looking at today is really more about the qualifications of our school security. I'm trying to remember, have we looked at the equivalent of, like, the behavior support? Because you mentioned, like, chokeholds wouldn't appear in the behavior support plan, because that's really more about other kinds of personnel, but that our school security officers, our police officers would have sort of a different set. Can you remind me, have we looked at that policy already? Where are we?
So, this policy, school security personnel, is because of a change in the law, and the law is requiring that all schools, while they are in session, have an armed guard or a police officer. This is for school security personnel. We have one school security personnel in this district who is not armed. This is not the policy for school resource officers or school police officers. So, so your question is, is there another policy for school?
Yeah, have we already looked at that one? Where are we in the process? I can't remember if we've already seen that one.
I would have to look back.
Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have off the top of my head, so...
Wasn't there one last spring dealing with the...
Well, this, this, these policies have come before the board multiple times, and that's why my confusion, because each year, when the school omnibus code passes, they change the wording. So, these policies literally are coming forward because it was changed from local law enforcement to law enforcement. And so, most of these are just a change in the wording and change in the vocabulary, because local law enforcement precluded sometimes state, county law enforcement and how policies were, and not in practicality for how school districts across the Commonwealth work. So, that was a change in the law. So, I, I'm sorry, I can't remember exactly which order, because some of these policies we've seen, I think policy, you know, some of these we've seen six or seven times in the last few years. And part of that's because of Act 55, which is a new, newer law. It's been around, but every year, they change the parameters of that law, and we continue to evolve.
Yeah, and I appreciate the opportunity to dig in them, into them a little more, particularly as I've grown as a board member, and I've stopped professional development related to these, like, there are new ways of looking at them. And so, it helps, I think, so, and even as we have new board members join, I think that's a useful exercise.
And I don't mean to be evasive in my, in my question, some of the questions you asked, I would, I didn't, you know, I would need time to really research to answer them properly. So, that's why I was hesitant on some of the answers, because I don't want to speak out of turn and say something that's inaccurate.
Yeah, I completely understand that. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, are we ready to move on the motion? I guess I'll say yes?
The amended motion.
Okay. Mrs. Anuzik, will you please call the roll? Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselhorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Franks?
Yes.
Motion carries to send 113.2 back to committee and approve all other policies. Thank you. Okay, personnel, Ms. Zich.
Great. I am moving on the following items, starting with resignations. I'm sorry, I will be a little slower, because I left my reading glasses in the car. Educational support, the resignation of Trinity R. Washington, personal care assistant at DMS due to personal reasons. For custodial maintenance, the resignation of John E. Parish, 12-month, 8-hour-per-day maintenance employee for the Fox Chapel area school district due to retirement. Thank you for your service. Supplemental contracts athletic, the resignation of Todd Hellman, swimming high school diving head due to personal reasons. The resignation of Lawrence Kameniki, baseball middle school assistant due to personal reasons. For appointments, custodial maintenance, Brian E. Gantner is approved as a 10-month, 8-hour-per-day custodian at O'Hara Elementary School. Chastity K. Leas is approved as a 10-month, 8-hour-per-day custodian at Dorseyville Middle School. For supplemental contracts athletic, the following athletic supplemental contract is ratified, Vernon Yenick, swimming high school diving head. Non-athletic supplemental contract is ratified for Stanley Strumpfek Jr., excuse me, student government at Kerr, at 33%. For volunteer athletic, the following athletic volunteer is approved for Matthew Harris in swimming. Correction, supplemental contract athletic, the following athletic supplemental contract was previously ratified in error, that's Anthony Griggs, interscholastic strength conditioning first assistant, F 25%. John Alaric, previously approved as interscholastic strength conditioning first assistant, at 75%, excuse me, is ratified as interscholastic strength conditioning first assistant at 100%. Salary and effective dates are as in the agenda. Supplemental contracts, non-athletic, Amy Jacobek, previously approved as student government co-sponsor, as now student government co-sponsor at 33%. Stacy Tripsick, previously approved as student government co-sponsor 50%, is now approved at 33%. I move, oh, yes, I move on these four items.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, Mrs. Anuzik, will you please call the roll? Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselhorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Franks?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Good, could you read the operations and cooperative services report, please?
I have four items to move on. The first is reappointments. Approve the reappointments of Richard Rainey and Robert Saunders to the Fox Chapel area school authority back to January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2029, as recommended by the superintendent after consultation with the authority. Number two, authorize the advertisement of bids for the high school panel feeder replacement project. Number three, authorize the advertisement of bids for the high school building column settlement project. And number four, accept the anonymous donations of $150 and $300 for the door... And number four, accept the anonymous donations of $150 and $300 for the Dorseyville Middle School musical fund. I move on those four items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I'll note that items two and three are both surprises for, and maintenance surprises that we're taking on. Is that correct? High school building column settlement and the panel feeder replacement project. Well, I mean, relative, they're like things we didn't plan for in the budget, is what I should say.
Surprises, not.
They're not actually surprises, we talked about them for many months. But, yes, no, but I meant like, please expect those things to be not a part of the original budget planning for this.
Right.
That's all.
Yes.
Sorry, I'll use more specific language.
For the school authority, can you just say a little bit about their role? Just because this comes up often, folks wondering who they are and how they support the district's work.
Sure, our school authority is, has five members on it and they are actually a body under law. But they are being used in this district as an advisory role. So when you hear about school authorities and in some places, they can make contracts and purchase things. In this district, they advise the superintendent, the administrative team, and then that comes to the board. And what our school authority really looks at is focusing specifically on facilities and using their experience in order to help provide feedback, provide consultation to the school administrators, to the school team, to our community as to things we should look at in, in facility contracts and things we should think about and industry standards. And so they've been a really great asset, considering all of the projects, to lend their expertise. You know, and they are paid as much as school board members, so they're, that is a zero dollar. But they are kind enough to meet every week and spend time when we have emergencies to, when we can, there are people we can go to to ask questions and gain some insight or find contacts if we need in order to address things.
And is the public welcome at those meetings?
They are all publicly advertised and they're all on our website, all that information.
Is there a set number of seats in that committee?
There are five, yes.
There, yes, you said how many?
Yes, there are five.
Five, okay, great. And those vacancies typically come about due to voluntary things?
Correct.
Is there a term limit?
I believe it is four years.
Okay. But they don't. It's a term duration, not a term limit?
Correct, it's term duration, not a term limit.
There are no term limits, okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine, I was just curious.
And, and there are bylaws for the Fox Chapel authority.
Yes, I'm aware, I'm asking about the nature of those bylaws, yeah.
And, and there are board members that regularly attend their meeting. They are not, the board members are not part of the school authority because that's a separate group. However, there are board members that do attend the meeting to gain that information.
Okay, great.
They're a separate legal entity.
Right, and where would I find the minutes of that entity?
They're all on the website.
Okay, great, perfect.
Okay, any other questions? Mrs. Anuzik, could you please call the roll? Dr. Hasselhorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Zitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. It's time for our second public comment, no one is signed up. Fox Chapel Educators Association, Mr. Bennett has no comments, okay. Board comments. I will say congratulations to our teams and our student group representatives who are here tonight. They've, it sounds like, had a great year. And I'm looking forward to the telethon. That's always a fun day to stop by the high school. So I am looking forward to that and hope everyone will give to this great cause of backpacks for hunger. And enjoy the holiday season to everyone. Adam?
I want to thank all the students for spending their evening, part of their evening with us. It's one of the best parts of, of this, this job for me is, is seeing our, our amazing students. And happy holidays.
Ms. Zitch?
Yeah, go, go Fox's soccer, the first Whitfield championship in 29 years for boys, that's really awesome. And the girls runner-up, that's also really awesome. So I'm just very impressed by that. And thank you so much to the Technology Student Association, who's 100 member plus, strong is very impressive outfit. So I, that was a total delight. Everyone have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you. Mrs. Cooper?
No comment.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
I'd just like to thank Mary Beth, Ron, and Vanessa for continuing to lead the board and congratulations on another year.
Thank you. Dr. Hasselhorn?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo everyone's admiration of our students who were honored. And even in the superintendent's report, it goes on and on, there's so many accomplishments to be proud of. And I especially love the diversity of it. So we've got speech and debate and soccer and cross-country and it just underlines for me the fact that we're doing really well in a lot of different areas. And that's a lot to be proud of.
Thank you. Mrs. Lynch?
Yeah, I agree. I think the Technology Student Association tonight was particularly, made that rounded, well-rounded conversation clear. So I appreciated having them here and hearing about the fruits of their hard work and labor. Quite impressive.
Ms. Finley?
I will just say everyone else has said fantastic job and happy holidays. Flu season, get your flu shots.
Good reminder.
Mr. Frank?
I echo everyone's comments, have a great holiday.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.